...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just temporarily.
Trustee Petrich.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin. Don't ask me where that came from.
I was just gonna...
I totally threw me off.
I think it doesn't go there?
It's Trombley.
Okay, can I take the motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting November 7th of 2018?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any adjustments to be made on these minutes?
No.
All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any disapproval?
Upstain.
One extension, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the village board minutes of November 13th, 2018?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Are there any changes, additions, deletions?
Yep.
No.
If there's no discussion, roll the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any disapproval, motion carries. Alright. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Welcome, all of you, welcome.
Yes, welcome.
It's good to see some village faces in here attending our meetings. Now, I'm gonna ask just a couple ground rules here, okay? I know you all want to have something to say, and I certainly appreciate your concern. I was talking to Diane and Andy this afternoon about this. I have some awareness of what's going on, and I sympathize with you because of your plight up there. I'm gonna ask that, just for, just to be easy here, I mean, if you all wanna talk, that's fine. But I think if we have one person that presents the issue and gives the board an idea of what's going on here, and then if you have something to add to the presentation, feel free to after the initial talk, okay? Can, is that alright with everybody?
Yep.
Now, I'm gonna ask that you, you don't, you stay away from personal names. You stay away from, you know, I know it's, I know it's personal to you. This whole situation is very personal to you, and I understand that. But you know that you don't wanna bring other issues to a head here by mentioning directly people's names. So give the board a synopsis, an understanding, so that we can, we can talk to you about it. I also, you know, when I talked to Diane earlier this afternoon, I looked at this, and I understand, to me, this is a three, this is a three-pronged issue here, okay? So I'll let, if Diane, if you will, please, I would appreciate...
Do you guys want that?
Is that alright? If not, somebody just stand up and give us a, give us a, what do you see as a problem? Okay? Thank you.
The issue that we're concerned about is with the dumping at the end of Willow Street. We, I, I had heard that some of this fill, so called fill, that was dumped there. Well, first off, when it was dumped, there were huge chunks of cement with rebar bars sticking up in the air. There was chunks of tarmac, and there were sidewalks. It looked like pieces of cement from like a sidewalk or something. That was all dumped in there. There were also children playing in there all summer, and, which was kind of scary, 'cause I kept thinking, oh my god, if they fall on that rebar, someone could've, you know, really been seriously hurt. We also, when we started questioning, Andy and I, about what was being dumped there, heard that some of this that was dumped came from Ross's Point when they closed, is it Wyeth, Eris, whatever you wanna call it, and that, that it came from another property in Champlain that had to be removed. So it really kind of perked my ears up, and I became very concerned. I was hoping to be able to catch one of you to talk to you, and I did. I caught Tom just last week and mentioned about this, and told them that I think people are being very concerned. It also was affecting water drainage. There used to be a ditch that ran right along the railroad bed all the way down to the river. Those ditches are no longer open. Yes, some properties have filled in the ditches, but I believe there were drain pipes or whatever, because it always, there was always water running down that way, 'cause it was always wet behind my father-in-laws, you know, and especially in the spring, or if it was a heavy rainfall, whatever, or a quick thaw. But now, we have ducks that are swimming in the pond in the spring. It's really flooding a lot, and I, you know, we just, I have concerns. I don't want contaminated soil at the end of my street. I don't wanna be looking at a gravel pit at the end of my street. I don't know why this has been deemed, you know, a spot. It seems to me a residential street in the village should not be used for that purpose. I, I don't believe anybody in this village would want that next to their home. Got large dump trucks that are running on our road. We have children that are starting to play on our street again. They're riding their bikes in the summer. You've got big tandem trucks coming with loads of whatever it is they're bringing. And it's a concern, and a lot of us are worried about it. So this is why we're here. We're looking for questions, or answers to questions, as of who gave the, the okay to dump at the end of the street? Who's doing the dumping at the end of the street? Is there anything in writing or in the minutes that states that it's okay for them to do that on Willow Street? Who checked to see if the fill was safe? Was it checked to see if the fill was safe? How does this affect the wetlands and our drainage? It's also closer to the river than where it was before when they made them move it. We have heard that, that, I want you to understand, we're not blaming the village. We're just asking for answers and would like some solutions, if it's possible. What are the zoning laws with dumping on a residential street? Are there any zoning laws? Maybe that's an idea to look into? And, and are people allowed to use construction debris for clean fill? If you have anything extra to add, but I think that's basically...
Well, my concern is the said property that borders my back lawn. And I've noticed since the time when it's, they started to dump there till the present, there used to be a pond right in the middle of the property, and then, once the fill started getting put in, that pond started pushing outwards. Now it's bordering right on my back property line, pushing up onto my lawn. My concern is when the fill, his job is completed, whenever that might be, I'm just concerned the neighboring properties that border this said property, what it's gonna look like as far as the water on properties that this property borders. I've heard that, well, you know, this, this is natural drainage, and there's a drain down Main Street or something. I don't know for sure. I, I don't, you know, this fill is gonna be about four and a half, I'd say to five feet deep. They're matching it up with Willow Street, the property owner. So when you come and look at my back lawn, I can stand there, and it's probably up to my chin, almost. So even though it's gonna be probably tapered down, you know, and everything, but you stay, you drop fill in there where there's a little water table, and the lowest part of the, of the lawn, or whatever it is, is gonna start, the water's gonna start coming up there. And wherever that, that landscaping stops, there's gonna be water that's gonna start to gather on the edge of that. And you know, the springtime, when we get the rains and the thaw, we're gonna have a mess.
Others, quite often, there's a couple ponds on the end of Willow Street, 'cause it's adjacent to Route 9. That has to be, I think, has to be built up a little bit, so it hits that story.
I do have some pictures here of when it was just first started to have fill dropped in there. This is about, those pictures are probably around a year and a half old, two years old. The latest picture's in the back, the last ones are from last winter. So between then and now, there has been more dropped in there. But, you know, I'm not sure just how, like I say, how high, much higher it's gonna go, or farther out. And as far as drainage issues, I'm not sure where we're gonna end up with when it's all said and done. I guess I don't wanna have my lawn so wet that I can't use it at all, you know, till half to three-quarters of the summer is gone. And then, if we do get a couple days of solid rain, not being able to get down on my property. I'm not sure if there's any zoning laws that, you know, state what a property owner can do to their property and affect the other persons adjoining the property, the boundary. I'm not sure of that.
Okay. Is there...
Yeah, our main concern was what the dirt was contaminated with, because our boys, or a few of the boys that were playing on the dirt. Now, we, our boys didn't have any issues, they weren't sick or anything, but we just heard that the dirt was contaminated. You know, that does raise concern, like what have our boys been playing in? And if it is contaminated, why was there not like a warning sign, or a do not enter, you know? That was, that's just our main concern. Like, they were never injured or anything, it's just that they were playing on the dirt and in the dirt, and we just wanna make sure that there isn't a health concern. You know, we lived in Champlain for four years. About two of those years, my boys liked to play in the dirt, he was a boy.
Welcome to the village.
Well, thank you guys. I moved to Ross's Point, but we worked here for four years, so...
Okay. Well, that's, I, first of all, I appreciate your concern, and I'm glad that you're here, and, you know, your willingness to come and look for some answers, okay? In my conversation with Diane and Andy this afternoon, I look at this as almost a three-pronged issue. Let me address the first one. First one is when the water project started here a couple years ago, the engineers looked for approved sites to take the spoils. Now, a spoil is when they dig the trench to put the water lines in. They're digging out the dirt, whatever it is, so that they can get the water line down to six feet, and then it is put there. It was put there at the request of the property owner. So the dirt was hauled in there. The understanding was that when this project was completed, or as I refer to it as the project from hell, when that was, when it was supposed to be completed a year or so ago, the contractor was to come back in and smooth that all down, and make sure the drainage was taken care of, and that these issues that you are facing today were not there. They were supposed to be fixed. As you know, contractor decided that he had skimmed enough money off the top here of this project, and he packed up his goods and left. So that's the first area. The second area is your concern about contamination in this, on this property. Now, whether it's contaminated or not, and I have no reason to disbelieve you, but if a firm, a trucking firm, is going to go and pick up material from one place to the next, the owner of that land is obligated to tell the trucking firm and the property owner where it's going, what's in that soil. If it is contaminated, no matter whatever it is, the obligation is for the owner to tell the trucking firm, the trucking firm, and the person who is the property owner, in this case on Willow Street, that is accepting this material. I don't know if it's contaminated. I have no reason to disbelieve what you, what you have saying. And what I feel is you should contact one of you. I mean, I can do it. I have personal out here dealings with the DEC as they are looking at the contaminated soil in front of this building. But I think it's also important that a citizen contact this individual, and I will give you his card here, that somebody from your group, and I will do it as well, but somebody from your group, contact Mr. Mulvey, who is the DEC's bill coordinator, and he will tell you, if he can't do it, then he will tell you who can. He is a caring, very intelligent individual, who I've, I've had some very good dealings with because of his concern about the health of the people who work in this building. This contamination out here, there are times in the spring where, and the ladies will go along with this, I believe, there are times in the spring when the ground thaws, and the, you know, you've got the rains and all of that stuff. You come into this office, it's like walking into a petroleum plant. It's so strong. So we're trying to get this taken care of, and DEC is a, is a very important part of this, of this remedy. In fact, they are paying for it. So that would be my second suggestion. You wanna make sure, you want to make sure that that soil is in fact contaminated. I just, I, and I have no reason to disbelieve what you, what somebody has said, or what somebody has telling you, because I have no first hand. But you need to understand that you gotta have proof in your hands that that is contaminated soil. And DEC will respond to your request. They'll respond to mine, but they also need to hear it from you. Somebody, somebody has to contact Mr. Mulvey and say, this is my concern. I have gone to a village board meeting. Feel free to use my name, because he knows who I am. And express your concerns about this, because you deserve that. You certainly do, you're property owners. You deserve an answer here. You got kids. So that's the direction I would take here in the second part of this issue. Make sure that it is in fact. Now, some of the stuff that was hauled in there, it should not have been hauled in as chunks of sidewalk, and rebar, and all of this stuff. That is the fault of the hauler and the property owner. That never should have been put in there. Some specifications should have been cited, that this is what you can bring in, and this is what you can't bring in. So I'm not putting all the blame on the property owner, but there has to be, there has to be some accountability here. Person who owns that property requested that the spoils be put there. He also, this other source of dirt, if you will, that was removed from another property in the town, that was removed from this property and taken up there and left, that should have been inspected and found to be okay. If it's not, then there's a whole lot of illegal processing going on here. And that's why you need to make sure, you need to make sure that that ground is in fact a contaminated source. Alright? And it's not that I don't believe what I'm hearing, it's just that you need to make sure that this is the case. Alright? The third part of this is I see. There is still work on the project that's taking place on the West Service Road. The contractor, the contractor who is doing the work up there, where they're going to put New York State, is going to build a new truck inspection station, and a state police barracks there, so that every truck that crosses the border has to go through that station. They're gonna direct it through there. They may not always have personnel there to inspect, but all the truck traffic has to go through there. That is in the process of being constructed now. I mean, they're up there drilling through rock that's almost impossible to deal with, but that's where they are. There are still some hookups that need to be made by this project. Beeline, for example, has to be hooked up up there, and there's a couple more that have to be hooked up up there. Again, it's about a year and a half overdue here. And I should apologize to you for that, but... So the contractor there is under, it spells out in his contract that he's allowed by the property owner to put material in there. He's got stone in there, he's got sand in there, he's got gravel in there, he's got a variety of things in there, that is going to be used at the West Service Road project. There's going to be sewer lines that's put in there, I should've mentioned that. The water lines are already in, but the sewer lines are gonna go in there, and there's a few other odds and ends that have to be done. But under the auspices of this project, and the okay approval of the landowner, that's why that's there. Is it unsightly? Oh yeah, it is. It was up there today. You got piles and piles and piles. But according to the contract of this, of this deal, of this project, once, once the water line is in and the sewer line is in, then the contractor is responsible for the cleanup of that area. At the same time, there should be some, there should be some attention paid to the rest of that area. And as you stating, you're, the way the drainage works is very important. And that has to be stressed to the contractor as they work to complete the project. Because that's, when we started this project, it seems like decades ago, but when we started this project, we made a promise to the landowners that their properties, if it was disrupted, the properties would be put back at its original state or better. I've said that for years. I use a lady on, on Prospect Street as the face of this project. Who had her sidewalk drawn up, her tree removed, all of this. And to me, that is the person that, you know, every time I see some, some issues with this restoration, I see her, because how she was treated with this project. But that's, that's the way I see this, is first, the material was brought in because the landowner requested it. There were other dump sites here, I mean, there were other spoil sites here. But he requested it, because he wanted to build up that land. So he has to take some responsibility here. The second, the second issue is if in fact, and I think it's very important that you find out, very important, because that proves your case. If in fact this soil is contaminated, that proves your case. Then you have a lot of options. You have DEC on your side, you have the Army Corps of Engineers on your side, and you have the legal aspects on your side. But you gotta make sure. Okay? Now, you can take samples and, could we handle the samples?
I think that probably has to be done by a DEC or somebody like that, probably has to do it.
They'll come and take samples.
Cause they, you know, they would, yeah.
They will come and take samples, okay? I'm sure they are aware of this, of this case, because they were actively involved in where a lot of this material was originally dumped. Army Corps was there, DEC was there. In fact, they were in here with a meeting with everybody as they inspected the site up here. So that, the second part, I think that's vitally important. You gotta make sure. Call them, get them to react. They will. Russell's very good at this, and he knows, he's aware of this case, because he was here. So they would probably be very inclined to follow up on this.
And they, they may have already done sampling too, when it was in another place.
That's what I wanted to add.
Cause if there was even a question, I'm sure they would've did it.
Yeah.
Maybe they have answers for that already.
Yeah, but I, I think it's that site.
Which one do you call? Well, I just wanted to keep referring to spoils. So the original intent to put spoils there doesn't mean that it's contaminated material.
No, this was all set, it was dug out of the trench.
It's just stuff that's being dug up.
Extra material.
That can't go back in, because we've placed it with sand, stone, and pipe.
You gotta, you gotta bed the pipe with sand, and anything six-inch or bigger stone can't go back on top, so that's stuff.
So the spoils, you know, shouldn't have ever been contaminated. Now, since other materials have been brought in, as you stated, from other areas, then there's no way knowing that, I guess.
Okay.
If you want to use, you can use a dump site anywhere, even on a residential street?
As part of the project, did he, he must've had a permit?
It's in our, it's in our plans. That was, that was a dedicated site for the water project.
To do that, that's the only reason. It's not like, no, you would, you would have to get a permit in order to do that on your property.
So you've got a beautiful street with all these beautiful homes.
Yeah, shouldn't we have been asked, or shouldn't they have had a say, or...
How's it go as far as zoning? Can you fill it?
There's no zoning. I mean, if you wanna fill your lot, you fill your lot. I mean, there's no permits required.
But isn't there as specific as to what you can use to fill your lot? You can fill it with, with cement?
Yeah.
And rebar, and tarmac, and...
There's no village ordinance that I'm aware of that prohibits it, that that's the thing.
That's just construction, asphalt and building materials, construction. But I don't think, the concrete, I know the concrete, I know some of the concrete was from to stay out from sidewalks and from stuff that tore out.
But, but Mickey, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the end of the day, based on our zoning laws, the property has to be kept up and mowed and...
Yeah.
Et cetera, so I mean, it can't be left like that.
No, no, that's what I'm not, I'm saying, what I said was that you can fill your lot.
Yes, so I'm kind of adding to it. To let people know, no, you can't just make it a dump site. No, you can't do that.
No, at the end of the day, that has to be seeded, and the grass has to be growing.
Exactly.
And then when it was finished, it was supposed to be all after, leveled, topsoiled, and seeded.
Yes.
Supposed to mow it and...
Which is why...
There's supposed to be a drainage pipe put in there also, that's gonna go across the railroad bed to the ditch on the other side to drain the concern that you had.
Yeah.
So...
How deep is that, do you know? Cause you can't get the depth of that water line, can you be blowing air through there?
I don't know. Alls I know is they're supposed to put a drainage pipe in there.
Now, Mickey is, when you refer to the A, you mean the construction outfit that was a...
Well, right now, the construction outfit is gone, the town is handling it. And that, that's part of the restoration, because we talked about that this fall. And, well, fall is now Christmas, so now they're looking at it for the spring.
It's not the same firm that was here before. It's a different firm, local. So I, I don't know if we helped you out, I don't know if we eased some of your pain, but those are the things, I think, those are the things that I would look at.
I have a question.
The material was brought in at the request of the landowner. It was supposed to be taken care of by the contractor, which abandoned the property, so abandoned the job. If in fact, some of this material is of concern, I would contact DEC before you leave. One of you, or I'll make copies for all of you if you wish. Call DEC, ask to speak to Mr. Mulvey. Use my name if you want, and...
John Mulvey?
Yes.
Use my name if you want, and explain to him your concern. They've already been dealing with this topic. Again, the Corps of Engineers was very active, which is a bit unusual, but it involved...
Waterway.
Waterways. So the Corps was here, DEC was here. If in fact, and you need to know, if it is the level, what it is, all of this stuff, is it, how dangerous is it? You know, what do we do to mitigate this problem? And what is our, you know, what are our legal avenues here? And I think if it is in fact, there are some legal aspects... Uh, there are some legal aspects that you need to. Mr. Mulvey's name is on the top, the rest of that's just an email to me. Because he's doing some, uh, they were doing some exploratory work out here in front of this building. But feel free, talk to him, call him, express your concern. I will do the same tomorrow. I will call him and explain to him what your concerns are. And I'm sure that, uh, I can't be a hundred percent, but I'm ninety-eight percent sure that he will respond to your needs. And then, you know, at the end of the, of the West Service Road project, all of that should be cleaned up. All of that should be taken care of. That's part of the restoration process.
There's no time limit on that?
I wish they would've done.
Project, when a project was done, it was supposed to be, but the project was not even done because we still got lines to put.
That's what I meant by that.
So it's extended unfortunately.
This is taking way too long.
Do you think maybe our zoning committee could maybe think about that a little bit and maybe. Be a little more specific as to exactly what you can use for fill. Especially on a residential street.
I could use looking into it.
I mean, I can understand if it was very deep and you were throwing all that stuff in there. You know, I can under, I, I get that.
It's pretty visible.
Because we did it with the gully that was across the road from our home. When they took up Route Nine. They used that prop, that part between Junos. And I to, to dump, I'm sorry, anyway.
We have a ten second delay, no worries.
But they dumped the tarmac, old tarmac and stuff down in there, but it was down in deep and then you were able to put dirt on the top.
Which is what should take place at the end.
But may, and then you say they shouldn't be, that probably shouldn't do with that?
What, what's that?
Well, today they went to put like asphalt in a waterway, you know, that was a gully.
It, it a gully.
In a gully.
A bit of drainage.
That was years ago.
Yeah, everything has changed.
Right, but this is something maybe we need to think more about in our, when we do zoning.
Well, we can certainly go back and look at our codes. And see what, you know, what can be done, what can be amended, what can be, you know, I'm sure Mike has some considerations. And some suggestions on how to handle this. I agree with you, you know, that it should be limited, what can be hauled in.
It should be more specific.
And it probably wouldn't have been as bad.
I know this is about a nightmare.
It probably wouldn't have been as bad if, if, if there was another contractor because the dirt they brought in, they would've leveled and they would've looked. It would've.
Been done and all.
Yeah. Which makes, you know, when something sits there, it, it seems to grow too. Just because it's there, it's like a thorn.
That was their old summer, old summer.
And, and now I know the, uh, the fellow that's gonna be finishing a water line, he did use it for staging to put item four in sand, just so he had a spot to put it, but I know it will be, it will be.
The thing to remember, we've got children, they ride their bicycles, they play on that street, you know, and you've got big tractor or tandem trucks coming in.
Actually, that was a poor site to put that there because of that street.
Yeah, they can't.
I mean, the first truck that came down that street ruined the end of the street, so.
They got a low boy that they, they can't even turn to get onto that street, they gotta, they gotta park it off the side and get the loader off to go down that street.
There's so many, it seems closer to where he's working. Seems to me vacant lots that they could've used.
Well, that's.
Too late now.
It's not only that, but it's the property owners.
Oh, I have to agree, yeah.
I don't know if we helped you out any, but you know, I sympathize with what you're going through. We all sympathize with what you're going through. We'll do what we can to help you out. But again, I'm gonna ask that you take a proactive stance here. And let D E C know your concerns. And maybe together, we can find something that will work out for everybody.
And let us know if he doesn't get back to you, if you've made calls or emailed and haven't had any response to it.
I'll, I'll call him tomorrow. I'll call him tomorrow and, and let him know that he can expect some phone calls. If he has an order, he receives some and we'll go from there. I mean, he's very responsive. He cares about, you know, the health of people. And, uh. You know, he's, he's. I don't think he would mind this description, he's kind of a gruff individual, but. He knows his business. Knows his job and he knows how to deal with these issues because he's done it for many, many years. Just watching him in action out here. He's a good person. So, I don't know if I, if we've helped.
I appreciate you're listening to us and giving us some, you know, answers to our questions.
Well.
See what we can do.
You know, you're, you're more than welcome to come back and sit with us any, any time.
Yeah, don't wait to run into us.
Whether you have an issue or not, just wanna come in and say hello and how you doing? You know, we'd, we'd love to have the company. Because that is a responsive community. You know, when, when we only see people when there's bad things. Well, we'll deal with it, but we also like to see people when there's good things. And as I told Andy today, I said, when I first took this job, I, I took the gavel and that piece of wood that you pounded on, I put it back there somewhere. I said, Andy, do I, do I have to get my gavel out again tonight? But he was, he was very good about it, man.
Well, this man you should be thankful for.
Yes, I do, every day.
We are thankful.
Because what he's done and the work he's put in. You're amazing.
Hopefully if that's low, we'll have the asphalt on that road next year, but. And I will, some of that drainage will be better because at some point here, it's probably hard enough now, I know there's a. Behind the, where the house had burnt, uh, that. It's gone, there's a high spot there too and all the water stays behind that, it doesn't get to the front of that drain, there is a stage drain that goes across the road.
Well, the sidewalks higher than the land.
Yeah.
And that's the main thing in our whole.
Well, there's, there's a drain down below, but it's same thing on the end, we just had that water break, it's pocketed, but that'll be taken care of too because if I have to, I'm gonna put a drain on the other side and put a pipe across, so. I'm hoping that next, this coming season, we'll be able to get that road paved. I had six ready this year and, um, they, people who are paving for us called me and said, oh, I've been meaning to tell you, they called me at the end of October. Uh, we can't do it now, we're too busy, so we were kind of stuck.
Yeah.
But, we, we're gonna do what we can to.
The road is higher, the, the sidewalks are our little trenches and when we get bad rains, it ditches it down and.
And I know a lot of users had concerns in the culvert too. Uh, one section was taken out to lower it. But that's gonna be all taken out and redone. There's a garage gonna be going in by that new place, but when he did put the culvert, I had him take one section out because it was too high holding the water back. And that will be, uh, that'll be taken out because it was a, it was an old driveway there and it only had a small culvert and it was way too high. That's gonna be going in the spring, so that ditch will be cleaned where it can, where it can flow. I know it was starting to back up over by your place, but it's, it's, it seems to be down to the bottom now, cause I was worried about freezing and then running across the road to where.
It's the same thing near mailbox, the ditch is lower than the culvert.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll address that. And do what we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Do you want these back?
You're more than welcome to say.
Yeah, just like a stand.
I mean, we can be boring, but.
I do have a question about cones really quickly, um, just for school bus purposes, it is great.
On the end?
Yeah, do you know about when those are gonna be removed, just so.
I got a plate, it's been, we can't get asphalt, we put coal patch, but the water, uh, the ground, we can't get enough compaction. So the coal, right now it's hard enough, once it starts to warm up, it's gonna get soft again.
Okay.
I mean, the school bus can get through.
Yeah, she just obviously prefers mine too, so.
You can get through, right? Tom, you could get through?
Yeah, I, I did a run one day and I came in on the south end.
Okay.
And exited on the north end, it works fine, so.
She should be able to get through.
If, if you want her to start picking up again, I think the only reason.
It's just easier with her because she's so.
Just please call transportation, please talk, talk to the transportation office and ask them to, cause there's no reason why she can't go in there.
Okay, she, they had called me, uh, last week and just said until further notice to bring them to the corner.
Yep, and then, and then I got a hole in my, that was before you fixed it.
Cause I talked to Steve and I put a plate, so the buses can go through.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, so then I'll just call them tomorrow, then, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that'll, that'll fix the problem.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Certainly is an issue up there.
Yeah.
But I. Again, I don't know what, how we can, how we can help that out. In fact, it's, this is contaminated. It has to come from a, from a higher source or, you know, from D E C to address that.
Yeah, under, under the full, under the full intent, what was supposed to go there, or I believe there should not be any contaminants, not knowing what else was in there, you know, we don't know.
Right, we don't know.
Well, if D E C's concerned enough, I'm sure that they will respond to their inquiries. They'll come down and take samples and, and go from there.
Well, I, like you said, I think that we should have the zoning take a look at this because frankly, if I had someone. Dumping next door to me that kept on going and going and going and mounting up.
And not, and not having a time limit to, to put it back to a long.
There, there was a time limit, but that changed when the contractor left, that's the downfall of.
Yep.
And this should've been, effectively, this should've been addressed way back when, when the water project was going.
Should've been completed already, right.
Should be.
That should've been addressed. You know? And then. The site could've been monitored a bit closer at that time. You know, we wouldn't have to be looking at the secondary, the secondary thing where it's coming from one here to there.
Right.
And again, it was, uh, I don't know if that was part of the public awareness, whether that was talked about. Being a, you know, being a site where this was going to be hauled in. I'm sure there was a public opinion or a public session to deal with a lot of these things, you know, but again. Hindsight here. You know, everything that's been in there. And now it's escalated a little bit more because of their concern about other areas and rightly so. It is ugly.
It is.
I know.
But. Okay. Mike?
I don't really have a whole lot to report, I was on vacation for most of the month of November. No, I didn't get any deer, wrecked my truck, but other than that.
Maybe I'll talk to this guy.
Life is good. Uh, just dealing with a, an apartment complex here that, uh, they need to do some remodeling, I won't let them rent it until I give them a C O for it. So they're in the process of trying to evict the tenants and it's, it's, it's a legal battle between them, the courts and the sheriff's department and the tenants, so I'm just waiting. Other than that, there's basically nothing else to report on.
I saw a few of our vehicles there today when I went by.
Yeah.
So maybe they're, maybe they're doing something with it.
Well, the, 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 uh. The people that owned the place thought it was my job to go evict them and I explained to them that no, that's not my job. They need to go through the courts and the sheriff and. So once that gets hashed out, then, uh, like I made it very clear to them that they can't rent it until I give them a certificate of occupancy for it. There's a lot of work has to be done in there, whether or not they wanna do it, well, we'll cross that bridge at that time.
There is a lot that needs to be addressed there.
Where it is?
Next to the bridge on where the dry cleaners was.
Okay.
Cool Home's old store, I guess.
Sheriff was there tonight.
Were they? No.
But our guys are good.
I understand.
Oh, I was just curious if it was another property up further because there were state troopers in front of that property. One day last week on my way to work. I was just curious what it was.
They seem to be around a little more frequently than they have done in the past. Hey, any questions for Mike? All right. This December is the holidays and I'm going to be good.
It's gonna be good.
They're happy, so good.
All right, greetings and welcome to the last village board meeting of two thousand eighteen. This past year has had many positive events. Like our annual village fest and our tree lighting party, music in the park, Billero Park. And the longboats at the river. All of which were very successful and well attended by our residents and visitors. We also faced some negative events this year. Numerous water main breaks that resulted in many boil water orders as well as exhausting our D P W crew. The water project, which was to be completed over a year ago, is still not finished and will no doubt go well into two thousand nineteen before completion. For this, I would like to personally again apologize and thank you for your patience and understanding as we contend, contend with this project from hell. Waterline issues here in the village will be addressed. Much needed repairs to our wastewater plant will be completed. Our street paving and sidewalk repair will be back as a concern that certainly needs attention. We will get caught up on the many jobs that we just did not have the opportunity to address this year. It is what it is, to quote a famous local philosopher. But if we can catch a few breaks with an easy winter and good weather that follows, we can and will get back into effectively dealing with our outside issues. This past weekend, we experienced one of the more family oriented events here in the village. Our tree lighting ceremony was Saturday evening and if you missed it, you missed a very joyful event. There was warm beverages, a nice heater to ward off the cold. A variety of community focused events. And of course, the ever popular opportunity to visit with Santa for a moment or two. Have your picture taken and get a couple small gifts from jolly old Saint Nick to take home with you. The children and all those attending seemed to enjoy the experience and a good time was had by all. It goes without saying. That to have an event of this magnitude, we must have a lot of appreciated support from our local business community. A huge thank you goes out to our local Dunkin' Donuts who continue to support our annual tree lighting event. Sorry. Ashley and her crew have such great community spirit and the hot chocolate and snacks helped ward off the cold and made the night even more joyous for all. Border View Grocery continues to support our evening with generous, with their generous donation of a tree that is the centerpiece of our gala affair. Notice that, gala affair. Without which the tree lighting would be very difficult. We would likely have to look for a volunteer, I better go back to this one and read it, just share with me. Border View Grocery was, continues to support our evening with their generous donation of, of the tree that is the centerpiece of our gala affair. Without which tree lighting would be very difficult. We would likely have to look for a volunteer to get wrapped up in lights and stand there all evening. But it's troublesome finding a willing participant. Maybe next year. Thanks also goes out to Robbie Roberts and his beautiful well lit tanker and all the Christmas carriages that the Roberts family take great pride in displaying throughout the North Country. Thanks to Kenny Drugs for their continued support with their generous donations that make the children very happy. Our local Girl Scout troop, it gets a big thank you for their wonderful singing of many traditional Christmas carols. To the delight and appreciation of all. The Shand plain fire department. For the great delivery of our honored guest of the evening, Santa Claus. I'd like to thank Clark Kirk for providing a much appreciated warming station with his patio heater. From all the cold hands that were around Saturday evening, thank you Clark. A Sidewear for their generous donation of lights and decorations and for being there. For the village, whenever we need and ask for a donation or their help, they are always there for us. Thanks Todd. Of course, and I hope I haven't forgotten anybody. Of course, the biggest thanks goes out to Santa for making a stop at our tree lighting to the great delight of all the children and s, and some adults. With his ability to spread joy and happiness to all. Without Santa's visit, this event would not be as successful and delightful a holiday experience. Mr. Kirk, thank you for all of us or from all of us here in the village. Mister Kirk, thank you for all of us or from all of us here in the village for your continued willingness to give this service to our children. Cold hands and all, you did a wonderful job. He's got a great attitude and he really likes dealing with the children and playing, you know, being Santa and he sees the joy in the eyes of all the children. Last but not least, and last but not forgotten, a big thank you to Juanita, Mary, and the D P W crew for all their help in making this a night to remember. With their continued support, planning and decorating, this whole event falls together as something which is meaning, meaningful to all, so thank you very much for your, for your efforts. A very wonderful evening and thanks to all those who attended. On behalf of your village board, we would like to wish you all a very merry Christmas and a very happy and prosperous two thousand nineteen. Thank you. Miss Gary.
Okay, so I wanted to get your opinion, folks. As you notice, there's not a lot of decorations up yet in the village and this week is supposed to be the competition. So I would like to extend it till next Thursday, giving everybody a little bit of extra time, praying that maybe we'll have a little warm up so that people can get on their roofs.
I'll get mine done.
And get lights out.
I think that's a good idea.
I think we really need it. It would be very few participants if we, if we don't. So that's good for you. I'll take it through the twentieth for the competition. Okay.
The early snow obviously had an impact.
Yeah, yeah.
Did on me.
Big time. A reminder again for the Stewart's Holiday Match Grant from Thanksgiving until Christmas Eve. Anytime you drop money in those jars next to the cash register, that goes back into our community. They match everything that they raise. So that being said, I have received notice to apply again for the grant. So that will be due at the end of January and I'd like to get some feedback on what we're looking to target for this year. Because you know, I'm a master at waiting until the thirtieth to write the grant and submit and I'm turning over newly for two thousand nineteen and not waiting till the last minute on tape. Let's see how that will. It's on tape. It's recorded, so any thoughts? Did we want to add to the playground or any of the parks?
I think we need to add the playground myself. I'd love to see stuff added.
It would be nice to update, upgrade a few of the items, an item.
All right, so I'll take a look and send around and see what your thoughts are. Okay. All right. I know with folks being downtown for the candy cane hunt and thank you Janet, you and your husband for the generous use of, of your home there for the community events and for Nikki who had great crafts. The kids really, really enjoyed that. Everyone had a really good time. So a couple comments were, when is the ice rink going to be put in this year?
We have a volunteer who's ready as soon as we can get the plastic down. We have a volunteer who's willing to go out and help flood it on a regular basis, so it should be up hopefully if the weather cooperates by the Christmas break.
Beautiful. If whomever is this volunteer needs extra help, you know, I have a couple of people that'd be more than willing to help as well.
I'm sure he'd appreciate it.
That would be great. Okay, so that's good. And then someone else had mentioned to me during the festivities about having a big bonfire in the village as a get together, which I think would be great to do. I thought it was a wonderful suggestion. You know, I know a lot of safety things have to be around that, but many communities do this as a get together and I thought that would be kind of nice for us to think about doing maybe over the February break to pull the kids together during that time. Maybe something like, you know, a whole skating event or, you know, mini hockey game on the mini hockey rink, you know, something fun, you know, just show off your talents and, you know, have a bonfire and, you know, roast some marshmallows type deal. So something to think about over the holidays. We can have a discussion on our next one, but I, I thought that would be kind of fun to do. And then last but not least, it came up again, conversation. I know I brought this up a while ago. We never discussed it. Terms. I would really like us to take a look at this two-year term insanity and make it go away. It's too short. You know, as we've talked about before, that, you know, if we get new blood in, you, you can't even learn this role within two years. And it feels like you're back out again. And even if we spread it out to every four years or have one office a year up and rotate it around, I just think the terms are too crazy for, for what we do. We're all long-term here anyway. And if someone wants to step aside before five years is up, they can and they're replaced by the mayor and, and filled in. But I think we really should look at that. Is it really a big deal to take a look at our terms?
Well, I think the way that we go is there would have to be a resolution by the board. There would have to be a public referendum. And I think it's up to the board to, you know, once the resolution is made, the public referendum is held, then it's up to the board. I don't think it would have to be voted on. I think the board can make that resolution.
So if we have to put it to referendum for our voting for March, can we consider that?
Just for a public hearing.
Oh, that's it? Just put up for public hearing?
I believe that all you need is just a public hearing. And then the board can, the board can pass the resolution, I think, but.
Can you find that out, Juanita, for sure? Can I come?
How did the town, do you know how the town handled that when they increased their terms?
Oh, boy. I know there was a public hearing and I think it was by public referendum too.
Well, we could set it up.
But the, but the town and the villages are different when it comes to that.
Yeah, I should point that out.
We can, we can contact Nikon and see what they're.
I'm sure there's a process for it.
Yeah. I agree with you in many respects, but I also, I, I think with a two-year term, with a two-year term, we have to go out and, and knock on doors. We have to go out and talk to people, you know, to get their signature on our petition. It's, I think it's important that we keep that contact with our citizens, with the people.
But, I mean, don't we all do that anyway?
We can do that in a different format, yes.
And, and not necessarily in January and February, the coldest months of the year, when they don't really want to open the doors too because it sucks the heat from their home and you're standing out there freezing while talking to them. I know it's how silly, but.
Or you're trying to warm up in a cold garage.
Right, you know.
Which felt really warm.
I mean, I think through the more and more that we're adding these community events, I mean, we're all very active in talking to our community and, you know, that's an important piece and people know to approach us. So anyway, it's just a thought I think that we need to address.
We can get some clarification from Nikon and see if they proceed.
I think that's what needs to be done. I, I do agree with her. I agree with you to an extent, but quite often in January, when you're doing that, it's not productive conversations. It's quick signatures. They're often very meals or whatever you're doing, you know. You do get some feedback.
Yeah, very little. I find that when I go around, there's not a lot of conversation because of the weather issue. I mean, they're like, yeah, here, I'll sign Amy. Good, glad you're ready again. All right, next. And it's like, you know, you want to start, is there any concerns you have? No, good. Go, shut my door. Yeah, there's a few that you'll get, go in and, and have the conversations with, but very few. Because you're out and you're talking to people and you're seeing them within your community and, you know, I, I think that's the nice thing about living in our community is, is having that closeness and, and that open dialogue.
Well, I think that's what makes the village a very special place to be.
Absolutely.
Because you don't have the strung out wide range. You're consolidated here in the village and you see people in the grocery store, the drugstore, the bank and on the streets and whatever. And, you know, one thing I can say about this board is that they are very active in the community and people enjoy that and they see us out there. And I think that's, that's why we're sitting on this board. So let's, let's see what Nikon has to say about this and, and what's more, I think it's.
And it's worth exploring.
Yes, I agree.
And, and we are ramping up for grant writing time again, so I, I definitely would like some feedback from y'all on things that you, you want to see so I can target in for some of the grants.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Okay, couple of community related announcements. There's a blood drive this Thursday, December thirteenth. It's earlier, earlier hours due to the change. It was a reschedule due to a cancellation by them. So it's from two to five, you know, it's to make it a little bit difficult, but it's because of being a Thursday, sharing the facility with the next group, Catholic daughters.
Catholic toes up, I said that right.
So we had to.
We share.
We had to change times. Two to five on this Thursday, the thirteenth of December. Please come if you can, one and all. And then the other announcement is, I know everybody's been probably waiting and looking forward to the Christmas caroling hayride given by the Knights of Columbus every year. It's been, I think this would have been the eighth consecutive year. It has been modified due to liability concerns, et cetera. And also the weather has been a problem from time to time, you know, trying to get out and real cold or rain and it's been canceled, so it's. We have decided to do a community Christmas party. This is open to the community and it will be at the Champlain Catholic Men's Club. We're calling it Christmas at Three Oak. I've started putting some posters out. Janet would hope you could, you know, put it on Facebook or wherever you do.
Yeah, so I'll take one of the posters and I'll use that as the.
Okay. I'll give you this one. I got a new one to bring up for here anyways. So it starts at two P M. And around three P M, there will be a special visit and story time from Santa and Mrs. Claus. And I understand that they have quite a presentation planned. They will, they will read stories to the children. They will be glad to stay there as long as needed for picture taking or whatever needs to be done and I guess they, they plan on putting out, putting on quite a, you know, quite a show. During the, the whole afternoon, there will be activities ongoing. There'll be food and snacks provided. There'll be various children's games and activities such as cookie decorating, for example, and adults are welcome to do that as well. There'll be gift bags to give out to the children from Santa. And at four P M, there'll be a sing along with Mary and Dave. Also ongoing is about, this will be Christmas movies will be playing and popcorn will be provided. So it sounds like it's actually bigger than what we had before with the absence of the wagon.
What was the date on that document, sorry?
December twenty-third at two P M.
December twenty-third, two P M.
Yep. Santa arriving around three, we're told.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah, it does. It's gonna be very nice. I think it'll be warmer.
Dryer.
Dryer, warmer, drier, and mainly safer. So that was that. And the only other thing I have to say, I want to reiterate and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone.
Thanks.
Me too.
First of all, thanks. I'll echo Amy's comment. Thanks to Nikki Malinsky for her organizing the children's crafts at the meeting house on Saturday. She really does an outstanding job with that. She's very talented. And thanks to Amy for her superb handling of the candy cane hunt. She, she really gets those kids hopping and jumping and stepping.
They like the red light, green light this year.
It was pretty fun to watch, I must say. The numbers were down a little bit, but it was so cold that day. We were very happy, but we probably had about thirty kids, I'd say. Some upcoming events, I don't know if these are in the right order or not. I think they are. We'll have our annual village walk on, called Champlain on the Move on New Year's Day. So January first at one P M, hopefully depending on the weather. We'll be in at the meeting house and decide from there where we're going to walk. We've done that, I think. This will be the fourth year. Champlain Book Club is meeting, oh dear, I didn't write the date. And Mary doesn't know either, in early January. Okay.
Just call it off, John.
Still have time.
So we have time.
Check the website.
Yeah. Check the website for that. Thank you. Champlain Author Series, Mark Berry has written a new book and he is going to be at the meeting house on January twenty-sixth, which is a Saturday evening at six thirty. They'll talk about his book and have some copies for sale. And in mid-January, we're going to start a sewing class. It's called Sew With Us. And the lessons will be designed around who signs up, if we have beginners, intermediate, whatever. But they're pretty exciting and there's quite a lot of interest from, you know, teenage kids through, you know, older, wanting to learn how to sew or wanting to get better at it. So I can refer my details on that a little bit later. Yeah, so I think that's it. And Merry Christmas and Joy at Noel and Bonnet. Oh, the wreaths decorating. Oh, yeah, I did mention that last time. The wreaths are due on Friday in this office. Correct. And again, the theme is my favorite holiday. So I hope you're all decorating your wreaths.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, like my houses too. Riley, can I have a little extra time?
The dollar store has nice, small wreaths that you can pick up. And then you just go into your decorations and find some holiday that you have a few things to put on.
I will try really hard.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. Thanks.
And then we just bring them into the office?
And you bring them into the office. There, there is a charge because we have cash gifts, but half of it is donated to the charity of the winner's choices.
Okay. Does the wreath have to be any specific size?
No. Oh, no, no. We don't have very many rules in this contest. And then we'll hang them all down at the playground fence, so it's really cool.
Okay. Yeah, can you keep them up longer?
You know, a lot of the people want them right back.
I know.
The ones that are left are the ones of like mine that aren't anything special.
But no one was.
Well, I mean.
I did observe a few of them. You didn't want back though.
Wait a minute.
Do you want some extra wreaths down there? We can take the ones off the pocket park and put them on there.
You know, I think that's probably a good idea because it's a nice decoration anyway.
Can we borrow some of the nice ones out here and just add to?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
I'll come in the middle tonight.
Oh, well, we will know.
The green photograph.
My take mine.
All right. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay.
Okay, so I had my first conversation with Sierra Fleming from the Clinton County Health Department regarding the community liaison. And so things are starting with that. I've gotten, I guess, my first voucher from her. With instructions on how to fill that out. So I've had my first phone call with her. And I think I've received another email from her, so things are starting to go with that. I don't believe we'll hear anything on that small grant that I put in for the kayak. I don't think that's going to be awarded or notified until March.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I haven't seen anything as to when that would, I haven't seen anything come out, so I would have to go back. But I think it's March when, when that's going to be awarded. Other than that, we had the senior citizens' Christmas dinner for all residents over sixty-five in the township of Champlain. It was considering the, the weather that day, which was not very nice. We had a very nice turnout. Food was absolutely delicious. We had a gentleman who came in and played the keyboard for the event, which was very enjoyable, so we thank everyone who attended that. It was very nice. And very sorry that we missed the tree lighting. And very sorry that we missed the tree lighting, but I can assure you where yours was just.
Yeah.
Freezing.
And the ballet was good?
Anyone who has not seen The Nutcracker has got to go see it. It is phenomenal.
It was excellent.
It was phenomenal.
But the Bruins and the Maple Leafs.
And we got to see a professional hockey game.
I'm not saying I liked one more than the other.
That was excellent. But, and Merry Christmas everyone and a Happy New Year.
Hey, we just checked when they're gonna be awarding that? Because, I mean, I really want to pursue that grant, so if that will go through, I really want to focus in on that.
And maybe that's, is that something we could do with the?
They won't give us that much.
No, but is that something that that money could be if we were awarded that from this?
To do a portion of it, yeah, if I found other sources for it, but I can't, you really have to have other sources if you're going with a portion of it.
Okay, alright.
Alright.
I'll find out.
Anything else?
Nope.
Will you report from the clerk's treasury, please?
Everyone has their expense and revenue reports for November, which is our half year.
Okay, do you want to make that transfer?
Yeah. When we do our abstracts, we have one account that needs funds. We're gonna transfer five thousand dollars from F eighty-three forty point two, which is transmission and distribution equipment to F eighty-three ten point two water administration equipment, which is our meters and meter parts.
That was five thousand?
Yes, please.
You've been a little bit harsh on the, on the repair bands.
Yeah.
It's not just meters and meter parts, it's most of it is, repairing veins.
Okay, need a motion to approve that transfer, please.
Slow move.
You have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Rule call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Frederick.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Okay, abstract.
We have additional invoices. The additional invoices are four thousand one hundred and sixty-nine fifteen for a total warrant of forty-seven thousand fifty dollars and thirty-six cents.
The additional ones are for? I don't have that.
Peak motor and pump, grinder?
Yes, that's.